Stop all the meeting of the Carbon County Board of Commissioners to order. Please rise for moment silence, prayer, and the pledge of allegiance. Immediately after the pledge of allegiance, our 4-H club will give their pledge.
Father, we pray for the farming community as they continue to work hard to bring us food. Bless them as they sow crops and care for the livestock. Surround them with love so they may know they are cared for and valued. Help us to be thankful for the food they produce and not to waste it. And as we would like to have our young people guided in the right direction that they fulfill what their predecessors has done. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge my head to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate minutes. Minute recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held March 16th, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning county business at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Next item is proclamation. 4-H week, March 24th, excuse me, March 20th through the 24th, 2023. Motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'd like to read this proclamation. 4-H week, March 20th through 24th, 2023. Whereas the youth of Carbon County are one of the county's most valuable resources. And whereas 4-H members contribute to environmental improvement, community service, food production, and participate in programs that aid in youth development, health, nutrition, home improvement, and family relationships. And whereas a result of international cooperation with many countries, 4-H is also contributing to world understanding. Whereas the process 4-H youth apply leadership skills, acquire a positive self-concept, and learn to respect and get along with other people. Whereas throughout the state of Pennsylvania, the week of March 20th through March 24th has been proclaimed 4-H week in Pennsylvania. Now therefore, the Carbon County Board of Commissioners proclaim the week of March 20th, 24th, 2023 as 4-H week in Carbon County and urge all citizens to give recognition to the people involved in the 4-H program. Given the underhand and the seal of the county of Carbon this 23rd day of March 2023, signed by the Carbon County Board of Commissioners, whining out signed chairman, Rocky C. Honor, vice chair, Chris L. Lukasevic, member attested by county administrator, administrator Eloise Honor. Sorry about that. At this time, I'd like to have our 4-H members. Wait, maybe what we should do is, Morgan, would you like to start since you're one of the more senior ones? And tell us a little bit about what you do with the 4-H, how many years you've been in 4-H?
Sure. So I'm a freshman at Lee Heighton. I don't know how many years I've been in. I've been in since eighth though, or ninth. But I am in the livestock club and I show dairy and beef. I'm in the potato judging club. And I do quilting in the Mariner Community Club.
Thank you, Morgan. Any other comments? I guess not.
I'm Joss Matola. I'm a freshman at Palmerton. This is my first year in 4-H. I'm doing market goats in the livestock club. And then I'm also in quilting and potato judging.
Thank you.
I'm Grace Sarah and it's my.
Speak up.
I'm Grace Sarah and I'm in fourth grade. This is my third year in 4-H. I'm doing livestock club and the Horning Valley Club.
You have one rabbit, correct? How many more are you getting? Undetermined.
I'm Ava Arrow. I'm a sophomore at ICS Hadleton and I've been in 4-H for eight years. I am only in the livestock club and I'm doing market goats and market lambs.
Thank you. Leaders, you have any comments at this time?
My name is Kristen Simmons. I've been involved in 4-H as a youth. And now I've been a leader for almost 35 years. I'm involved with the livestock club with the poultry project, which has been a challenge this year and last year. And I also teach the girls quilting and also involved with the potato judging at the Pennsylvania Farm Show.
Potato judging.
Potato judging.
I'm Hank Williams. I'm a life leader. I walk around, check all the tack area. I do anything for the children, anything they need it. And I'm always with them to make sure everything's in good shape.
Hello, everyone. I'm Phil Felsen. I'm the 4-H educator for Carbon County. I'm now into my second year as educator here. And I just want to thank everyone for your support of 4-H. As we continue to grow the program, we're currently hoping to start a club at CCTI and engaging new youth in the community, promoting for our upcoming camp season, and keeping our current members and leaders strong in their club. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would be remiss, I do have to talk about the 4-H auction coming up and livestock auction on August. What's the date? No offhand. First or second?
12.
12? Okay. Explain the program a little bit. The kids get to auction off their animals. Let's see if you have a steer that weighs a thousand pounds, that steer, what the market value might be. I don't know what it is right now. Let's say it's $5 a pound. A steer is worth $5,000. And if you would like to go and bid on this steer, you bid on the steer. And anything over, let's say, if you want to buy this steer, you bid $5,000. You pay the child or it goes to the club and the kids that raised the animal, you pay them. If you bid $6,000 and sell it back to the market, the market pays that market value of $5,000 and you pay that extra $5,000 or $1,000 goes back to the kids that raised these animals. Give you a little history here. Rabbits. What did I, see, we raised three rabbits last year I bought. What did they cost you? About $8 for the rabbits or something like that for three rabbits? And it cost me over $100, you know. Very expensive rabbits and I didn't even take them home. They're not allowed to raise them in Lee Heighton. But those are the things that the kids, it's fun watching them show their animals. And it's Sarah, right? You know?
Grace.
Yeah. When you see a little girl come out in a ring with a steer or hog or goat, whatever they may have, and watching these kids, how they handle these animals. It's a long day, but it is well worth going down to the auction and watching these kids show their animals and the pride they have and the hard work that they put in to raise those animals, the bookkeeping, and everything else. And it's a family affair. They spend a whole week at the fairgrounds. There's prizes for those that keep their stalls, the cleaners, et cetera. So it is really a truly amazing program for the kids. And it can't be accomplished without the support of the parents and the leaders and the community itself and all the buyers that show up at the auction. It is really a fun time. Bought rabbits, goats, chickens. They have expensive eggs. But it's all great and it goes to a good cause. And these are the kids, you don't read about in the paper enough for the good stuff that they do and not the kids that bad thing. Excuse me. Other comments?
I would make a comment to the leaders and members of 4-H. There has been no clearer recognition or demonstration of this county's commitment. And I'm talking the citizens of Carbon County's commitment to 4-H and working farms. Then on 8 November, 2022, when over 83% of the citizens voted to support a potential bond issue to preserve open space and agricultural land. So you should sleep well knowing that your community is behind the program and recognizes the value that farming brings to our county and our country.
And we are working this year alone, working on five farms that are looking for preservation this year alone. That's about all they can handle at one time. But future, I hope we can do, you know, get caught up on all the farms that are waiting to be put in there. This time, Rocky, question?
Well, the only thing I wanted to say, I think Wayne sort of hinted that we should not be fiscally responsible in this situation. And this is investing into these kids and into the 4-H. I mean, it's a very good program. I mean, it's not, I wish everybody comes out and participates or looks at what they're doing because the projects, I come from a small farm and I see what it's like. I mean, I was driving a tractor, I think, when I was six years old. So I know where you're at. And today with all the technology, it's tougher and tougher. I mean, now they have tractors that run by their cell, by GPS. And it's like tough to have these small little farms. It's tough. So anything that anybody in Carbon County or the surrounding counties could come to the fair and support them, we greatly appreciate. Thank you.
First time, want to have the orator come up? Why don't we move, all right, will you bring him up?
We all going up?
Grace, Grace and girls.
Well, we got to get a picture with all these nice gentlemen.
Or maybe here.
Thank you.
Okay, who's going to?
You're in the middle. You're in.
Are you going to get the proclamation then? Okay. On behalf of the Carbon County Board of Commissioners, we thank you for, you know, everything you do with the 4-H club, the animals you raise and everything, all the hard work that you put into this program. Congratulations. See you at the fair. If not, you can work. Don't ask too much money for your rabbits. I can't. Morgan, thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, guys. Good to see you. Thanks, Amy. Make sure you get like five or sixes.
The next item is the report of executive sessions held.
One executive session held on Wednesday, March 22nd at 2:00 PM for personnel reasons.
Department reports, the budget transfers for 2022 and 2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yeah.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of check numbers, 235046 through 235157 for expenditures to the general fund checking account totaling $771,086.21.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
The treasures report?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
The personnel report for county departments.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
The acknowledgements for courts and row offices.
Motion acknowledged.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copies will be made available to the press upon request. Advertising. For approval, authorize the advertisement of the invitation to bid for refuse and recycling collection at various county locations. The agreement that we currently have expires April 30th, 2023 with no option to renew.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
CDVG for approval, authorize the advertisement. A finding of no significant impact requests for release of funds and notice of intent to request release of funds on March 24th, 2023 for the Peaceful Nights Homeless Facility Women's Shelter fiscal year 2020 CV.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Boards and authorities. Environmental Education Advisory Board. An appointment to fill a vacancy, five-year term to expire December 31st, 2027. Abi Gardiani as the public representative, Nescuahone, Pennsylvania.
Motion approved appointment.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Children and youth. For approval and execution, a revision to the Children and Youth Services fiscal year 2021-2022, Fourth Quarter Act 148 invoice report totaling $779,474.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
A budget amendment for approval and execution. Children and Youth Services fiscal year 2021-2022, Needs-Based Plan and Budget Amendment in the amount of $1,507,183.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
County engineer. For approval, the reappointment of Carbon Engineering Incorporated of Summit Hill as county engineer and acceptance of the 2023 professional corrected fee schedule.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
District court for approval and execution. A one-year renewal agreement with Bruleage Communications for local and long-distance service at the district court office in Palmerton, Pennsylvania for a total monthly reoccurring fee of $99.80 for four lines.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Emergency management. For approval and execution, submission of the grant application for the 2022 Federal Emergency Management Performance Grant, requesting funding in the amount of $70,087 for the term of October 1, 2022 through September 30th, 2023 to support the salaries and benefits of the emergency management coordinator and administrative assistant.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Planning and development for approval and execution. Modification number six, Jim Thorpe Borough CDVG CV funds fiscal year 2020. Reallocation of funds as follows. Moving $10,384.35 from business assistance to Parks Recreation Camera Park to install picnic tables and replace the pavilion roof.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic? Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Service agreement for approval and execution, an agreement with Penn Power LLC doing business as Penn Power Systems of Fleetwood, Pennsylvania, to perform annual inspections on twelve generators at various sites at a cost of four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per year. Additional charges for oil and coolant samples as well as emergency repairs. The term is April one, two thousand twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I'm gonna make a motion to table this for two weeks so we can look at other options. I noted that eight of the twelve generators are Generac. And although we might have to split the contract up, I think by separating it out between Generac and other generator brands might be a significant savings to the county taxpayer. We have one of the premier Generac dealers and maintainers here in Carbon County. I haven't seen any numbers from that. While we have no legal requirement, I think it would be due diligence to at least take a look at it for two weeks to reach out and check those numbers specifically to the Generac. I know for a fact, pricing that I've seen is significantly lower, probably seventy percent lower than what is being offered by this non-county entity.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table for two weeks. So call for the vote. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next item, the solicitor's report.
Thank you for the area agency on aging, seeking a motion for approval and execution of an agreement for the use of the facility and to provide catering services for the two thousand twenty-three Senior Games Banquet on May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three from four P M. to eight P M. at the Franklin Township Volunteer Fire Company in Lee Height in Pennsylvania for approximately one hundred fifty people at a rate of seventeen dollars per person. The facility rental fee is three hundred dollars plus one hundred dollar cleaning fee and the security deposit is waived.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Also for the agency on aging, seeking a motion for approval and execution of an agreement with Woodlands Inn and Resort of Welkspear, Pennsylvania, to reserve the classroom on March twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three to hold a special event project hosted by Link, the Pennsylvania Link to Agency or Aging and Disability Resources. Total cost is approximately four thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and thirty cents, depending on the number of attendees, for rental fee, audiovisual equipment, buffet, and refreshments, including the gratuity.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For the Jim Thorpe Railroad Station, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a banner request by the Sixth Annual Jim Thorpe Independent Film Festival at the Mock Chunk Opera House, April twentieth to April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, with the banner to be displayed April sixth to April twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-three.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor? Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For nine-one-one communications, seeking a motion for approval and execution of an upgrade to the existing subscription order from Prepared Emergency Communications Service of New York City to allow the sharing of photos, text, and video to first responders at a total cost of nine thousand five hundred dollars annually. And this will automatically renew from the effective date at a total cost of nine thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars, i- if not terminated earlier by the the county on thirty days' notice.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For five-twenty-five Iron Street, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a special activities agreement for use of five-twenty-five Iron Street in Lee Height by Saint Luke's University Health Network and Carbon County Kid Zone for car seat installations on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, pending receipt of a valid insurance certificate.
Move to approve and execute.
I will second that with a little discussion on this also. I I don't know if we should table this. And I'm just looking at the date here. May twenty-fifth is the week that the building is supposed to be done. And they're gonna be moving an awful lot of equipment in and out. They're taking their shop boxes and everything. I don't know, Wayne, did you, can they move it another week or or is it depending, are the state police coming in to do this or Saint Luke's? I mean, is something on schedule for them? I mean, it might be that we might have to move it the following week because I don't, because they're gonna do it drive around. And if they're starting to load equipment up on tractor trailers and stuff, I don't think that week might be the best. And aren't they having a meeting about this next week or like with Saint Luke's, I think on?
Yeah, they do have a kids' own meeting next week.
I mean, I, is there anything wrong with approving it and then just changing it afterwards? Bob, I mean, if there's a problem, but then everybody's setting their date to that.
Postings have been put out and advertised.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't think.
I don't think it should interfere.
Because I know when I talked to Jim the other day, he said that that's when they're, I mean, that's gonna be a pretty busy place. I mean, I guess we can just change it at the last minute, but just so that everybody.
Is it Saturday, right?
No, no, it's during the week.
They do it during the week or usually goes for about three or four hours. You never know how many people you're gonna get. Could be three or four car seats. It could be two dozen. So I've been at several. I think if we set it up right, I don't think it'll be a problem.
Yeah. And you know what? Maybe even if we have them coming in one way and not going, I think they planned it to go all the way around the whole parking lot. Maybe just divide it in half that we have something, but just so that they realize that there could be a problem there.
I think we can work out the details that day.
Okay.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next, also for five-twenty-five Iron Street, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a proposal from Integra One of Allentown, Pennsylvania, for the new telephone system at five-twenty-five Iron Street, consisting of equipment, including five-year Fordicare, which is the twenty-four-seven support services for their hardware and software, at the amount of twenty-one thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents, and setup and configuration at a cost of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for a total of forty-four thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For Parks and Recreation, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a special activities agreement for the use of Mock Chunk Lake Park by Saint John's U C C Board Boy Scout Troop Number seven seventy-seven for Monday night meetings, six to eight P M., and occasional weekend camp outs at the Camp Apple Tree.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Seeking a motion for approval and execution of a special activities agreement for the use of Mock Chunk Lake Park by Jim Thorpe Sportsman's Club Incorporated for children's fishing contest on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, conditioned upon approval by the P A Fish and Boat Commission.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Also seeking a motion for approval and execution of a special activities agreement for the use of Mock Chunk Lake Park by Saint Luke's University Health Network, again, the Carbon County Kid Zone. This would be May sixth, two thousand twenty-three, conditioned upon receipt of a valid insurance certificate.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For task collection, i- if I could just preface this, these two resolutions and agreements are preceded by, what I understand was the relocation of the elected tax collector for Perryville, which resulted in her no longer being eligible to remain as the tax collector, which resulted in a vacancy for the tax collector for municipal and county taxes. So with that, first, we're seeking a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero zero eight, authorizing the collection of county real estate taxes by the county treasurer for the calendar year two thousand twenty-three.
Motion adopt.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Okay. And on a related note, seeking a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero zero nine, authorizing the collection of Perryville Borough Real Estate Taxes by the county treasurer for calendar year two thousand twenty-three.
Motion adopt.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Right. And lastly, seeking a motion for approval and execution of an agreement between the county and Perryville Borough outlining the terms of the tax collection services by the county treasurer on behalf of the Borough for calendar year two thousand twenty-three, in which the municipality agrees to pay the county an annual fee of three thousand dollars plus fifteen dollars for each tax certification and twenty dollars if a fax response is required.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yeah.
Nothing further for the solicitor's report.
Further business? Attorney General Commissioners Reports, Mr. Honor?
The only thing I have to say, thank you for what our 4H people do. And I hope it continues as long as Kristen has been in it for that many more years. But thank you very much for what you do.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yeah, a couple things. First and foremost, the Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority, which is really guiding Pennsylvania's overall effort to increase broadband connectivity throughout the Commonwealth, has released its draft guidance for the first tranche of funds being being made available for wired and fixed wireless broadband. They're looking at potentially as early as twenty-seven April for applications to be accepted. Their guidelines are available on the P B D A website. I'll also send it out to Blue Ridge, Windstream, and the other I S Ps here that serve Carbon County. We do continue to have un- and underserved areas in Carbon County. This is an opportunity for the I S Ps to step up to the plate and apply for parts of that two hundred million dollars that are coming available here with this first round of grant opportunities for broadband. Secondly, and it's already been sent to Amy and James Ryan, I'll get it to you, is a copy of the departments, and these are only the twenty departments that fall under the Board of Commissioners, right? The twenty-twenty-two notable accomplishments of those departments. And the purpose of putting this together was to highlight the positive impact that the county employees have on the quality of life issues of Carbon County residents. You know, expose the significant number of touch points county employees have with citizens every single day and the diversity of services that are provided. Third, provide the public a measure of the return on investment, right, for our tax money. Eighteen million dollars plus a year comes into the county specifically from county taxpayers. This helps highlight what we get in return by those employees. Want to impress also upon the departments and their leadership and the employees, you know, really the importance of establishing on an annual basis methods and measures of performance so that they can demonstrate their value to county residents and always work towards, you know, more effective, more efficient, and importantly, more responsive service, service providing to the citizens. And I also believe this in my heart, you know, there is a lost culture and belief in public service. And it's really to kind of re-energize the thought of what is the purpose, or as Simon Sinek would say, what is the why of county government? So if you have any questions on the notables, I would ask first and foremost, probably speak directly to the departments because these were their most notable accomplishments. And I suspect after having done it once, next year, you'll see much better data being used to highlight the difference that these departments are making. And the one entity that is not mentioned in these notables are the ladies who work for the Board of Commissioners. Make no mistake, they are critical infrastructure that enable all of these departments and especially the Board of Commissioners to operate in the service of the residents of Carbon County. Would have been just too difficult to encapsulate in three bullet comments, eight words or less, all they do for the county. But make no mistake, Colleen, Lisa, Jen, Corinne, and Julie and those predecessors are incredibly important and critical to what we do every day. That's all I have.
I'd like to expand on that as well. Anytime anyone has a question, where do they go? Right here. We have a question even from our state legislators, senators, where do they go? They come here with the phone calls. Right now, we're short a person in our purchasing director. Who's doing the work? The county commissioner's office does that work, in particular Ellie and the other people. The duties get pushed off and shared duties. They work well together in sharing everything that they do. They each have their own little area of expertise, but we're losing one unfortunately to a retirement. So we're looking for an executive assistant for our administrator here, who an extremely important job. The people we had, a lot of the people in our office have moved on to other positions, purchasing director, parking. We lost two or three people, three at least, I think, to just a purchasing. And those people move on to different positions. So this office has been one for promoting from within and moving things up. And unfortunately, we get them trained and they go to higher positions and department heads. But they certainly do an excellent job. Anytime I have an issue with a computer or printer, they do it all. I mean, I T, they, we do have an amazing staff here and a lot of good department heads as well that go above and beyond. And especially with the incident we had with the water leak, our people were here when others were not. They were in the office, they're doing their job. And I applaud them for, you know, going out of their way. And there were a couple of other people in some of the other offices as well that went above and beyond. So thank them. Next week, we're gonna have Gary Williams here. You saw, we received his report from last year, his touch on it basically. Yeah, in the sixth. He'll be, I'm sorry, he'll be here. Hundred and twenty-two thousand call, five hundred calls or ten or something like that, calls that they answered last year, about sixty-four incidents between fire, police, V M S. So it's a busy office at times. They're sitting there or doing other things. And but when something happens, it goes from one extreme to the other. You might be able to survive a lot of times with one or two dispatchers. But if a major event occurs, five or six dispatchers are enough. And it's hard to keep staffing there or have that amount of people on there for those incidents that are fortunately few and far between. For the training center, we finally did our first cure burn last Saturday morning this past week. All four burn rooms had a half barrel, but at least a pallet of straw and pallets in there and got the room temperatures up to five hundred degrees. We were shooting for more to dry the mortar out and just build up the temperature up to five hundred degrees at the ceiling and let it burn out, cure. Now we'll go back this probably Sunday now because the weather's not looking good. And we'll add more fuel to the fire and try to get the temperatures up for a longer period of time to help cure the the concrete motor in the burn rooms. And then we'll do a third one. After that, we'll start drilling with the board, the committee in particular, and write up our policies, how many pallets you can burn at a time, which direction, where we will put the burn cribs, we call it, to protect the other bare walls. So there's a lot of policy and procedures we have to put in place and study wind direction and airflow, et cetera, if we can protect firefighters when they do go in there. So winding down as far as little odds and ends that have to be completed, yet sealing around the concrete and safety hinge on the confined space gate so we don't drop it on somebody's head down below or things of that nature, anchor points for rappelling things. So we are getting there. There's one interior firefighting class that's starting up in early April, two active shooter classes that have been scheduled, and we're working on scheduling some other classes there. So finally, we're moving right along. And I think April fourth is the first class of this season. So getting there. That's all I have for today. Okay, meeting adjourned. 4H. Four H. Do Any Of You's Have Any Questions? None? Before I Ask The News Media. Any Questions On Any Of The Actions We've Taken Today? None? Okay. Kelly, You Wanna Go First?
Kelly, Can You Turn On Your Mic And Put It About Four To Six Inches? Same With James Because The Public Is Complaining They Can't Hear The Press Asking The Questions. All They Hear Is Our Responses, So If You Wouldn't Mind, Again, You Should See A Bright Green Light Once It's On, Alright? Four To Six Inches Or It's Basically Like Talking Into Nothing, Harvey. Thanks.
Okay, My Question, Uh, Do You Have The Cost Of A Clean Up For The Administrative Building Water leak?
We Will Probably Have That Tomorrow. Um, They Were, They, No, The Adjuster Was Here Yesterday. Uh, The Contractor That's Gonna Do The Work. So They're Gonna Get Together And Agree On What They're Gonna Pay For And Uh, I Think It Looks, I Mean, I Think Last Week I Had It In The. I Just Made A Comment. It Could Be A Hundred Thousand. Uh, It Might Be More Than That. Uh, Just Because Of Like, We, We Might Go Into Working On Weekends. And We're Actually In Fact, I Was Working On It This Morning. We Need Uh, What Chairs? That's Our Responsibility, You Know? Chairs Were Uh, Ruined, Computers, So We're Trying To Get That List Together. So Hopefully By Tomorrow, We Should Have Everything Finalized On What The Cost Would Be.
What Are Your People Using Now With The Computers And Chairs And Stuff?
Well, They're Using Whatever We Gave Them. You Know What I Mean? It's Like We, We Had Some Computers, You Know, Well, We Always Have Computers That Are Backups, So They Hooked Them Up. Uh, There Was Very Little Computers Ruined, But It Was Like Chairs Mostly Ceiling Carpet, Insulation Was Wet, Uh, Painting. You Know, It's, It's A Little Bit More Extensive Than When You Just Look At It And Say, Okay, That's It. But Now Wallpaper Has To Come Off Of Wall. A Whole Wall Might Have To Come Off, Re-insulate. So It, It, It's Like I Said Last Week, That Hundred Thousand, I Could Have Been Half Right.
So There's Additional With The Like Carpet Could Come Up Walls?
Oh, Yeah, There's, Well, In Fact, Yeah, In Fact, Here The Whole Carpet's Gonna Be Done In The Hallway. The Second Floor, All The Carpet In The Hallway. Uh, Down On The First Floor From Where The Stone Part Like The, Like The Congolian That Looks Like Stone From Their Own Back. That Whole Area Is Gonna Be Done. Uh, New Carpet. Uh, The Majority Of The Ceilings Actually, They Can't Match Some Of It. So What They're Gonna Do, In Fact, On The First Floor, They're Gonna Replace The Whole Thing All The Way Out To The Elevator. That's Gonna Get Replaced. The Second Floor Is Gonna Be Sort Of The Same Thing. And Ours, Like We Didn't Have Any Much Damage Up Here, I Mean, For Ceilings Or Anything Like That. But We're Just Gonna Take The Tiles That Come Out Of There And Replace Up Here. But The Carpet, There's A Lot Of Carpet Going In Here, Like A Lot. And, And That's Gonna Be, I Think, Our Issue. How We Can Keep Operations And Probably. Like Once We Get All This Together, Then Next Week We'll Have A, A, A Meeting With All Department Heads. And Uh, Figure Out How We're Gonna Do It. If We're Gonna Do Half A Room Or Half A Floor Or, You Know, We'll Have To Figure It Out. And, And Like Even Like All These Uh, You Know, Like Mark Or Any One Of The, The Directors Of The Departments, We Have To Have Their Input, You Know? It's, It's Very Important That We Have A Five Day Operation Here. I Mean, It Was Tough For Us When We Just Shut Down For Them Two Days. And, And Now With The Tax Season Coming Up. Um, And I Know With Some Of The Things That, That The Treasurer's Gonna Deal With, It's, It's Gonna Be Hard. So We All Have To Work Together.
Look, Elevator, Construction And The Work With The Broadband. You Know What I Mean? All These Things Are, You Know, Making It Hard.
Is It Going To Be Done The Elevator Soon?
Yes, By The, Well, By The Seventh. That's What I Was, That's What I Was Told The Last Time, By The Seventh.
They Have Been On Sight This Week.
Yeah, And Yeah, They Are Working On Now And They Should Be Ahead Of That Schedule. But What Depends On Like They, It Has To Be Inspected Before It Puts In Operation. So That's Gonna Be It. If It's Gonna Be A Day Or Two Uh, To Get Inspected. But By That First Thursday Beginning Of The Second Week Of April, It Should Be Done. I've Only Been Saying That For What? Four Months?
We Were Given A Price To Do Uh, The Jack, No, I Shouldn't Even Bring It Up, Probably.
No.
The Cost To Have Him Come In On A Saturday To Do The Jackhammering Was Over Seven Thousand Dollars. Sorry Employees, Wear Your Earplugs.
Yeah.
We're Just Gonna Have To Deal With It For One Day. Uh, We Just Can't See The Uh, At Seven Thousand Dollars. So It May Ha- Occur With The Moving Of The Offices Around Uh, Whatever We Can Do. I Don't Wanna Go To Weekends Because It's Gonna Be A Big Cost And.
Yeah.
Maybe It.
You Have The Roof Going On At The Same Time?
Yeah.
The Roof, The Air Conditioning Unit, So Oh, Yeah, A Lot Going On Right Now.
When Is It All Gonna Be Done?
Um, By The End Of.
Twenty Six?
No. I Mean, I, I Think The Roof And, And All The, The HVAC System Should Be Done By The End Of May. Or Well, In The June. It All Do, Well, And That's Another Thing How.
Weather Permit.
Yeah, And, And If, If The, The HVAC Systems Are Available, That's What We're Gonna Be Waiting On. But Uh, And I Couldn't Even Tell You When This Project's Gonna Start With The Renovation Here. I Mean, It All Depends When The Contractor And Doing It. I Think One Of The Things When I Talked On Is Like The Carpet And Ceiling Tile. It's Not Like You Go To Lowe's And Get Twenty Ceiling Tile. I Mean, We Need Hundreds Of Tile. Uh, So That's Gonna Determine On When It's Gonna Start Also.
Okay, And Anything As Far As The State Remodelment?
Um, We Are Meeting Today At Two O'Clock With Them. And This Were We Uh, This Children And Youth Uh, Revisions And Budget Amendments. That Really Doesn't Have Anything To Do With It. What This Is About Is Where Uh, Vendors Of Ours Did Not Submit Bills To Us. So It Was Not In Say The Quarter That They Had A Habit In. So That's What All This Revision Is. It's Not Like Everybody Might Look At This And Oh, They Owes Another Two Thousand Dollars. And That's Not The Case Because There Were Some Bills In Here. I Think There Was One For Like Forty Nine Thousand Ninety Dollars. That Was Not Submitted To Us. So And It Wasn't, I Mean, We Didn't Miss It. It's Just That It Should Have Been In, In Like Whatever Quarter It Was. And We, We Submitted In Another One, But I'm Hoping We Uh, I Know Last Week Like I Talked Probably For Five Minutes On That Subject. And I Think We Have To Revamp This System How We Get Funded. We Can't Be Behind Three Million Dollars All The Time. I Mean, You See What Happened Last Week. And, And I, I Realize That Everybody's Short Staff Even At The State. But And I Think Last Week We Had That Fine Where They Actually Fined Us For Not Reporting. But Then They Owes Money And Like I Think That Should Be One Of The Things That Should Be Waived. But Uh, As Far As That, If We Find Something Out And, And They Were Cooperative To Meet Tomorrow Afternoon Or Today, Uh, This Afternoon. So I Think I, It Sounds Like A Pretty Good Outcome For Us, You Know, For The Emails That They Send Us.
Yeah, I Think That's All I Have.
I, I Don't Have Any Questions This Week.
Just Talk About I Guess You Guys Are Putting Out To Bid For Trash And Recycling. Um, Let's Talk About That A Little Bit.
Bob, You Can Handle That.
Continue To Be Picked Up And In The Recycling Also, You Know?
Yeah.
Wow, It's A Tough One.
That Involves Bins And Yeah, Mostly Dumpsters And Stuff Like That, Uh, Those Costs. So Not Like The Uh, Little Garbage Cans We All, I Don't Know If We Have Any Garbage Cans. It's All Dumpsters At All Our Facilities.
At Various County Locations. It's The Park, It's Here, It's Prison, It's Not Anywhere.
Including The Bear Proof. Did We Ever Get One In The Park?
They Asked For Them, Yep.
Yeah, Yeah, Because Uh, Our Maintenance People Were Almost On A Daily Basis Up At The Prison And Nine One One Cleaning Up After The Bears. So We Finally Got A Bear Proof When It's More Money. But When You Look At The Uh, Time Involved And The Maintenance Staff Cleaning Up All The Time And. Just The Environmental Impact That Blows Away And Everything Else The Stuff They Drag In Into The Woods, So.
As Long As The Bears Don't Get A Key, We'll Be Alright, Right?
The Other Animal Problem We Have Now Is The Geese Up At The Retention Pond At The Training Center.
Oh, Yeah, That'll Be Good. They'll Be Swimming In That.
Anybody Looking For Geese To Raise, You Know, For The Four H Auction, You Know, I'll Put You In Touch With The Right Person. Bring Your Net, We'll Get You As Many Geese As You Want. Anything Else?
That's It. You're, You're Just Looking For A New Company To Come? Like I Guess Your Contractor, The Old One's Running Out. You're Just Looking For A New One?
He's Going Back Out The Bid.
Yeah, They Could Be The Same Company Whoever Comes In With The Best Uh, Offer.
Yeah.
And That's Just To Pick Up On County Properties. It's Not For Each Municipality They Deal With.
No, No. They Have Their Own.
Okay, That's All I Have. Thank You.
Okay. Well, You Know.